Okay, it's seven o'clock. I call these temples only for meeting order. Please stand by.
I fight really to defy our United States of America and to declare law and order which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all.
Okay, pursuant to the open public reading at the Sentinel and South Jersey Times were notified of this meeting, as well as being posted in the municipal building and on the township website. Chris, would you take role, please?
Mr. Gattano?
Here.
Mr. Leo? Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Garofalo?
Here.
Mr. De Cesare?
Here.
Mr. Hamel? Mr. Felici? Mr. Iglesias?
Here.
Chairman Gravesner?
Here. Okay, in the absence of Mr. Leo, we will see our alternate, uh...no, none of our alternates are here, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, minutes of the previous meeting.
I make a motion we approve.
Motion by Dana De Cesare, second by...second, and by seconding the, uh...second...who was that? Mike? Mike, second by, Mike, uh... I'll pull a little favor, eye, pose, statue.
Yeah, yeah.
Three statues. Jim Ketchum. Richard Iglesias and Anthony Guy, Guy Tom. Okay, we have two applications on the agenda this evening, and I think we're gonna switch. We're gonna take Vince, uh, Vince Angeles first, because that shouldn't take us as much time. There's a lot of people due for the Mystic Botanical Farms. Mr. Angeles, please come forward. Mike, everything in order?
Yes.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give. State your name and address for the record, please.
Vince Angeles Junior, 862 Salem Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Angeles. I want you to state what would you, uh, what your application is tonight.
Uh, my application is to put two additions on either side of the house, and one for the most willing to enlarge the entrance to the house and the doors and stuff like that. The additions will be twenty-three by fifteen on both sides. Uh, we're not adding any bathrooms, we're not adding any bedrooms. We're just enlarging the space of the children's bedrooms, and we're making it greater.
And all we need is a variance for the front, Dave? For the front yard?
Looks like it.
Can you cut? You were unclear on that, on that.
Well, that's what we need to hear, to have some testimony on. It's not clear in the application or the documents that were submitted about the size of this addition in the front.
I haven't sent that back in, or at least in the application, with the dimensions on it, on the drawing. I sent that back down to the eighty-five feet from the front.
I think I did see that on the show.
I sent that back in, I go later, Dave.
So the front addition is gonna be eight by eight?
Yes.
Can you clarify the side additions? The documents that were submitted said twenty-eight by fifteen?
Twenty-eight by fifteen. I'm not moving electrical on the other side of twenty-eight.
I'm sorry, I thought you said twenty-three by fifteen.
The other side, I believe, is twenty-three, because we, uh, are not moving electrical boxes. Those will be shorter by about five feet. The left hand side of the house, twenty-three by fifteen. The right side of the house should be twenty-eight by fifteen.
Also, side of the lot?
Yeah, so, uh, we did a report dated July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, which we recommend the application be deemed complete. This is in, uh, Pineland's Rural Residential District, which requires a three-point-four acre parcel. This lot is an existing undersized parcel of one-point-oh-eight-one acres. So it's an existing, like I said, existing undersized slot. Um, it appears that the only variance required is front yard setback. Uh, it's marked on the plan, forty-one-point-two feet is the requested front yard setback. In this zone, you have to be at least fifty feet. So that's kinda what we're up against, pretty straightforward.
I think you should address the variance for the size of the lot as well, because if you have an undersized lot, then you increase the, the house and the lot. Then it requires a variance because it's undersized. Uh, that is pre-existing non-conforming, but I think it should be addressed so that he has a complete, um, decision tonight.
So you need both variants?
So let, let's go back. Um, it's marked on the plan that the front yard setback is gonna be forty-one-point-two feet. But in light of the testimony that it's gonna be an eight-foot by eight-foot addition, actually, the front yard setback is forty-seven-point-four, much closer to the fifty feet that's required. That, that's why I had some concerns.
Okay.
Forty-seven-point-four is requested, fifty foot is required, and the undersized lot. And did you say one of the...will one of the additions be a bedroom?
No, they're just some board and current existing bedrooms. They don't have, uh, ratcheting is up there, they don't have...
Good idea.
Did you make any attempts to purchase additional area to make the parcel conform?
All those were set out, I'm requesting.
Yes, they were. Does that, Mike?
The requests by adjoining property owners for additional land or purchase, they were sent. And the responses were...so no.
Just the two variances.
Okay. Any questions? I will open up the public.
I make a motion we open the public.
Motion by Dana De Cesare, open to the public, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Richard Iglesias, all in favor, eye, pose, statue. Is, is there anyone from the public line to be heard regarding this application?
I make a motion we close the public portion.
Motion to close, second?
Who's second?
Second by Mike Garofalo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
I make a motion we approve the two variants for undersized, uh, lot and, uh, frontage.
Second that.
Okay, motion by, by Mr. De Cesare?
And second by Gattano. Mr. Gattano?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Garofalo?
Yes.
Mr. De Cesare?
Yes.
Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
Chairman Gravesner?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Angeles, the application was approved.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mystic Botanical Farms LLC. Mike, everything in order?
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman Gravesner and Chairman Ford. I hope our application will be as much as mentioned for this hour.
Maybe, maybe.
Um, anyway, this is a use variance application, uh, to, for class one cannabis cultivation at eighteen-thirteen Dutchman Grove. It's a farm of about eighteen acres. It's in the PRRs, in Pineland Rural Residential. And the proposal is for a company, an LLC called Mystic Botanical LLC, which we have, uh, the two minority members of that company here today. We also have one minority member who's also the property owner. And, uh, they're here to testify that this should be approved based on the criteria set forth by the state of New Jersey. Uh, basically, that it meets the positive branch of their superlong use variance in that it is inherently beneficial, but also that this property is particularly suited for this purpose. And as far as the negative, the detriment, uh, branch, we will...they will testify that this should not negatively impact the zone, because it continues to encourage different species. It continues to encourage farming, uh, which are critical parts of, of the zoning ordinances and the, uh, purpose for the zoning ordinances. And they will also show that, um, any concerns related to dissent will be mitigated. This is a very small, and it's limited, uh, by the state to the ten thousand square feet that they're applying, applying for. I believe initially their plan is to start with five thousand square feet and then expand and tend. But it is a, um, small cannabis growth operation outward. Uh, the only real...the only real change is to the site itself would be the fences required by the state. They already have their, um, preliminary license from the state for this operation. And it requires two eight-foot chain link fences and certain security measures, which are all part of the application that was submitted. So I know there, every time there's been a cannabis variance, there's been a large turnout. And, you know, I myself have been in the audience before to approve certain cannabis operations based on, you know, the operation and the location. And in this case, this is very much a different application from those applications. This is not, like I said, a manufacturing facility. This is not a processing facility. It's literally ten thousand square feet of roof, which would then be freeze-dried and shipped off. So maybe the, uh, amount is very small. Where it's situated on the farm, there are no close neighbors. Uh, and basically, the freeze-dried process will prevent the majority of it. But there are several other steps we're gonna be taking if it does become a problem. And my clients are going out and speaking to all their neighbors, um, to make sure that they're comfortable with this. So, uh, it's a good fit, it's unobtrusive, it's safe. And, you know, we have this board to make important decisions like this. And it doesn't mean that if this one is approved, that every operation related to marijuana will be approved in the town, so it's a individual application. And, you know, I'm a big believer in the owners doing what they want on their own property with minimal government intrusion. In this case, the owners have tried to plan and factor, uh, basically every possible measure to protect the quality of, of life and protect the township around them for themselves, the family members, rank the township residents. And just as an aside, there is a two percent tax available to the township on all cannabis products produced.
Should we, uh, you...the owners are gonna testify?
The owners are gonna testify first, which is, uh, William J. Piper, and then Sergeant James Will and William L. Piper are all here to testify.
Why don't we swear them in? Hold up. Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give.
Yes.
Each one of you, name and address for the record.
I'm William J. Piper. Eighteen-thirteen Dutchman Grove.
William L. Piper, Seven Hills Cyrode, West Defford. I grew up here in his township.
I think I know you.
Master Sergeant Genwell, United States Army retired. Uh, I live at sixty-three Basseroe, Winona, New Jersey, oh-eight, oh-nine, oh.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to, uh, call Mr. William J. Piper first. Yeah, I think you, I think you just put your name and address on the record. But, uh, you're the owner of the, uh, property at eighteen-thirteen Dutchman Grove, correct?
Yes.
And you're the owner of that property?
Correct.
And you're also a minority member of Mystic Botanical LLC, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you are supportive of this application for use variance, correct?
Yes.
And how long have you lived on the farm at eighteen-thirteen Dutchman Grove?
Since nineteen-sixty.
In fact, you, uh, grew up there?
Yes.
Went to Delsey?
Yes.
Played on part of the famous football team that won two state championships in Delsey?
Yes.
Tight end, right? Okay. And, uh, what do you currently farm on this property?
Uh, cattle, horses, and chickens.
And is it, um, farm land assessed except for the house and one area?
Yes.
And you understand that the portion that would be used for cultivation, that it would only be farm land assessed, going to be transferred to that use, right?
Yes.
And, uh, is it your intent to continue using the rest of the farm for conventional farm profits?
Yes.
You can elaborate if you want, but, um, and is it your intent to also continue making the rest?
Yes.
And why are you supporting this application?
Well, everything we try to do farming, whether it's cattle, horses, chickens, uh, grain crops, it's not, it's too hard to make it. I mean, the cattle market goes up and down, you know, the grain market goes up and down. So we were just looking for something to help pay for everything.
So that you're trying to kind of consider this?
Yeah, he, he all of a sudden really wants to get into farming and plant other things or whatnot. He wants to penetrate and stuff, so this was the start.
But this is an eighteen acres, relatively small farm, correct?
Yeah.
And I, you have not been successful as of yet in, in getting any of your farm land preservation, correct?
No.
And I, the, in fact, the size of this farm has always required you to have outside equipment, correct?
Yes, I got a bit of a job, always had to. Like I said, the market goes up and down, the cattle, like right now, they're real high. I don't believe in six months, it might be real low, which is fine. Hard to make it.
In fact, I, you've worked as a professional steer racer, correct?
Yes.
You were the...
Forty years at Cal.
And you were the first frontier circuit champion, right?
Yes.
And in fact, you were one of the four Central Park horsemen in the Navy help?
Yes.
All from, all from, uh, what transpired on this farm?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, that, tell us what the purpose of that fenced area inside which the new fenced area is gonna be put? Uh, what was the purpose of that fenced area when you fenced it?
That was our arena for years where we practiced. Um, so now a parcel or a basket or a big couple, they just approved what it, uh, what we decided to do.
Now, uh, going back to your high school football career for a minute. Um, is it correct to say a football field is about a hundred and sixty feet wide?
Yes.
And the end zone is about ten yards or thirty feet?
Correct.
So if you put the two end zones, just the two end zones together, you have ninety-six hundred square feet?
Right.
Which is about the same size as this proposed cultivation.
Right, it's not.
Thank you. Do you have any, uh, questions for Mr. Piper?
You, you said that's as, as big as they're allowed to make it?
Yes.
According to the state, all you can have is ten thousand square feet outside?
For this particular class and outside, yes, it's limited and bound. And the, um, I believe there would have to be also their application if they wanted to do anything different from that. I don't mean joining, I mean with the state.
Okay. Not very many.
No, I just have one, one question. So right now, you're living there and it's associated with the cannabis. So in the future, if you were to move, relieve, is this gonna have to go together? In other words, somebody has to have the residence and the cannabis together?
Well, it's already, um, built, at least. I mean, I don't plan on moving anywhere, because the way I figure everything's going now, and there's nowhere in the world to commit to five hundred of them. You know, I need to get the services secured, you know, I mean, that's all on my taxes, so...
But I believe it is just one block and lot.
Right, so if at some point, you know, he wasn't living there, that's gonna have to all go together? If someone, if someone were to buy it, they would...
They would buy the house too, but unless, unless they know where, where the stuff is. And I believe that's, it's all one parcel.
And then whoever, if there were new people to buy it, they'd have to get approved by the state to operate this?
They would have to get a license, absolutely. And, uh, any license, I believe part of the final license is getting a letter from the township recommending. So there's, um, there's two ways that the township can restrict it, even once this variance is granted, if it's granted. And one would be not writing the letter if, if a new applicant applied, even for the same portion. And the second would be every five years, the, uh, township...now, this wouldn't be for this particular, uh, company, but the township has the right to restrict any new, um, cannabis operations the same way this farm around, they restricted, I believe, distribution and retail. So they would have the right, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm like a newly, uh, novice better, but I believe that would restrict any new applications as opposed to, like, I don't believe this would be grandfathered if that were the case. I mean, it would be grandfathered to itself, but I don't believe it would be automatically for the next applicant to get their license, if that makes sense.
What, what's the growing season?
We will answer all these questions. Uh, this Phil Piper is not the expert on, uh, the actual cannabis operation, but we will, uh, address all that with the other two witnesses.
Okay.
I can answer, but it probably won't be accurate as accurate.
Any other questions? Figure next, uh...
And I'd like to call Sergeant James Will. And I'm gonna try to get the computer back on the screen at this point.
Good evening, everybody.
Now, I know that's a little bit small, so people may need to come closer to, uh, see what's going on there. And if he wants to, you know, get closer to the screen, to wait till you're more than welcome to. And, uh, you've already been sworn in. And can you, uh, tell the board a little bit about yourself and how you've gotten involved in this project?
Absolutely. So I am a medically retired, uh, combat-disabled veteran. I cut my teeth in the eighty-second Airborne. I did Iraq twice, Afghanistan once. Upon my last return from Iraq, I'll be honest, you don't save yourself. You don't. I had serious issues. I'll be real with you right now. My daughter's in the office, or in the office, in the room, she almost didn't have a dad. This stuff is serious. Do you know what changed my life? A buddy called me, said he tried cannabis. I didn't sleep for ten to fifteen years. Like, it just didn't happen. Night sweats, screaming. My children's mother, as well as another young lady, they would freak out at night. So I would wake up, freak out, and clear my entire house with a gun. I have not done that since I started using cannabis. And you're gonna hear other testimony tonight from vets about the same issue. I hear every day from my friends, from family, from random strangers, I wanna help veterans. I wanna help veterans, I wanna help veterans. And it's always tough. I said it, I wanna help veterans, and this opportunity came up. So I'm gonna do the right thing, and I'm gonna help my brothers and sisters and arms. Because at the end of the day, we have twenty-two veterans kill themselves a day. I've known some of that. It's one thing when I buried my friends from combat, died in combat. I understand that. Having veterans kill themselves, there's no reason for it. You know, I'm treated by the VA. I take, uh, a significant amount of medication every day to help. While I was in the Department of Defense still, still in the service, I was actually prescribed Marinol, which is synthetic kerosene. Because they were desperate to try anything, and it helped. Like, these things all helped. My issue with that though was I was expecting to drive while on it. And I don't believe that any type of drinking and driving. This is my chance to actually help my brothers and sisters. You don't need one, go back there, Jake! I'm just trying to do the right thing. And I think this is the right thing, because at the end of the day, the state put in barriers to entry for veterans, in particular, ones suffering from what you would call PTSD, but I call post-combat stress disorder. The big difference being, if you're in a car accident and have PTSD, you wouldn't go back and do it again. I would go back and play for a minute. So I covered all of them.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's a little nerve-wracking, I apologize, gentlemen. A little emotional.
And I, I apologize to the students of my outfit, they are back. So can you explain to the board, um, this, this is the proposed project plan at eighteen-thirteen Dutchman Grove? Can you explain to them what it entails?
Hey, everybody, see me, if I'm over here?
Yeah.
All right, so let me get, I'm not in the way. I actually have to go on this slide. All right, so here is the frontage to the property. If we use the smaller map, which covers the whole property, uh, you can see the boundary lines go all the way around. That is existing fencing, as well as hedgerows. Basically, you can't come into this farm except through the driveway. So, once you go into the farm, there is a gate. That gate will be locked while we're operating. Uh, the only people that'll have keys are me, Big Billy, and Young Billy. So, once you went through the entrance, you'll find the residence to the right. That is where Big Billy lives. The front here, as well as the front here, are pasture land for the horses. Once you went back here, we had, uh, a lactated barn there, and I'm not even sure what that is. Still, I, I only think this is it. I just bought that farm.
We'll wait to be sworn in, but I believe that's a building that was there when the picture was taken.
Yeah, sorry about that, that was, I didn't notice that. So, on this side of the farm, um, this is where the chickens and horses are currently kept. And this pasture land here would be for any of the cattle we bring in, uh, because this will still remain as a functioning normal farm. So, right here, we have another gate which enters. So, which would bring you into this field right here. The field right here is where we're planning to farm the cannabis. So the reason we picked this is for a number of reasons. And it's one of the reasons that makes this a unique property to do it on. First and foremost, if you notice, the entire perimeter of that field is hedgerows. There is what we call six-to-eight-foot fence in that hedgerow. As someone who used to pheasant hunt, I would not want to go into that hedgerow. It's a mess, like, nobody's getting through that hedgerow. So your only entry point is right here, where there'll be a gate on the farm. So what we're looking at right now is one choke point, two choke point, three choke points. Right here is where we propose to put the cannabis, uh, plant. Within that, there will be a three-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot business trailer that we'll be using for storage, um, freeze drying the plants to help eradicate any smell, as well as, uh, any other business functions we need to take care of. So right here is where the trailer, the business trailer would be, and the rest of this will be where the plants are. So we requested a ten-thousand-square-foot license. You can get a license up to as much as you want. But when we looked at the property, the smart decision is to stay within that hedgerow, because people can't see into it. It's not close to the road, and it's not close to the neighbors' homes. We did go out and talk to every neighbor, uh, before we submitted for the zoning package. Additionally, we're gonna have two eight-foot fences. The first fence will be approximately twelve-hundred-and-fifty feet. The reason I'm saying approximately is, it's a security company we work with, and I can touch more on security, uh, we wanna make sure we have enough standoff between fences. Because you don't want fences so close that they can go right over. But that said, that probably will never happen due to the nature of the security involved with this.
Can you describe, um, the security plan in general terms? I know the worst thing for security is to lay out your plan publicly, but there are certain things required by the state. And, uh, can you confirm that you will need those requirements?
Uh, yes, we, we have already talked to the state. The state approved the two-fence plan. Uh, that was one of the first things we talked to them about. The reason we're using two fences is, like, this is how I explain it. The way we designed this was based off a security consultant. My, my personal experience securing small firebases, company outposts, et cetera, as well as, within the agricultural realm, we wanted to look at other agricultural businesses. And if you look at poultry business, it's almost identical security features. So we took all three of those and kind of put them together.
And the, uh, state requirements for outdoor grow area require fencing to be constructed metal chain links or similar secure material and measure at least the eight feet from the ground to the top. And support posts must be secured anywhere, as well as meeting the minimum requirements of elevated municipal provisions. And your fence, you need, or your double fence system needs those requirements.
It meets all the requirements laid out by the state.
And the locks on the deeds with the commercial grade is also required, correct?
Uh, there'll have to be badge access as well.
Yes, but commercially...
Yeah, everything is commercial grade.
And the outdoor grow area is also required to be protected by a security alarm system and twenty-four-hour video surveillance system that's continuously monitored and capable of detecting power loss, uh, to ensure surveillance of the entire perimeter of the grow area and all portions of the security fence and all deeds. And that's the actual state's knowledge, I'm not providing anything particular to you, but your plan... I'm not providing anything particular to you, but your plan meets all those requirements, correct?
Yes, all the security cameras, all that. We, uh, met last week with the chief of police here. He supports our plan and also said he actually supports what we're doing here, which we appreciate.
And, uh, again, the residents would also remain occupied-
Uh, yes.
-for the foreseeable future, which provides an additional level of security, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, before I move on to the, um, operation itself, can we have any questions related to the, the plan?
Just like you said, the, the chief of police reviewed your security plan, and he approved it.
Uh, he put his support behind it, because I, I wouldn't say the chief of police has an approval in it. But here's the thing, we have a PACE plan for this, which if anyone's done their time, they know. And the E in PACE is emergency. They're the first ones to get the phone calls. We don't want our first meeting, if there were a security incident, to be doing that. And we wanna make sure he is happy with it. Because at the end of the day, they're our emergency guys. We need to know they're confident in it.
Any other questions related to the plan? And can you describe, um, the actual operation, maybe starting with what the growing season is?
Uh, growing season is the same as every other farm crop. Uh, you're looking early spring, depending on weather, to early fall. It's pretty similar to what you do with soybeans, corn, all of it.
And how, you said the first planting would occur in early spring, correct?
Early spring, once weather permits. Because it's like any other planting, they're only so cold hardy. You know, we can't, we're not gonna be putting plants out if there's expectations.
And then, uh, when would they be harvested?
So, harvest will generally take place, there may be two. A small one first, which would be maybe end of July, August. And then the main harvest, like every other farm, will be in the fall.
And how much manpower would be required to harvest this 10,000-square-foot cannabis for operation?
Not much. Uh, we're expecting, with me and Billy obviously working there, um, we're expecting maybe two other people.
And during what periods of time would you require those two other people?
In the fall. Um, with that said, because I believe in being honest, we're not 100% sure. You may need four people. What I can tell you is we're not gonna need an army of people. You know, a handful gets it done.
And for what period of time, what duration would you need these people in the fall? About how many weeks?
I would estimate six, six weeks probably would be it.
And would you also have, um, additional employees in the spring during the planting season?
I'm not 100% sure, because it really comes down, until we're doing it, you're guessing to a certain extent. But I wouldn't say, I mean, planting seeds is generally a two-man job, we can do it. But I don't wanna make promises or lie to the community with this.
And to the, to the point where you're planting, you're talking, you're gonna be planting from a seed?
Yes, we're gonna plant from seeds.
Okay, and is this manual, or would you use the equipment to do it?
All manual. There's gonna be no tilling, no damage to the existing ground.
So there's some sort of the, we'll say, traffic coming in and out related to planting would be you more often? Anybody with seeds?
Uh, yes, yes. And as our will be comfortable.
And then during the, um, harvesting, you would have to have these additional people, and then you have to prepare the, um, product for shipping, correct?
Yes.
And that's through the freeze-drying?
Yes.
Method? Okay, can you tell us a little bit about that?
So, we're using freeze-drying technology for this. So, have you ever, I mean, everyone here has probably smelled the smell of cannabis. And you're like, "Oh, God, it smells so bad." Well, when it's actually growing, it doesn't. Some of it smells like fruit, some smells like flowers. There's even some, which we will not be growing, that smell like diesel fuel. Um, I'm not a fan of diesel fuel. So basically, when the smell is strong, and you, you normally see this at indoor grow operations, what they do is when they cut the plant down and harvest the flowers, they dry them in open air. As they dry, uh, basically what's happening is compounds are breaking down in the sulfur. We've been working with a gentleman named Professor Rob Magia. He's a professor at Stockton University. He is actually a smell researcher. So, he contacted us to see if he would be able to continue his studies on smell at this operation pending approval. His initial, um, research indicates the smell of growing cannabis. And this is only about a four-week period. Because cannabis doesn't smell all the time, it's just during the last portion of flowering. The smell only travels two to 300 feet. Now, once you cut that down and leave it to dry, and not everything starts breaking down, that's where you just, it's almost an uncontrollable smell. By freeze drying it, we're taking care of that right away. As soon as they come off the plant, they're going in a freeze dryer. The exhaust from the air is dried, dryer, dryer will run through, uh, carbon before leaving the business trailer. This way, we're getting rid of the smell to the best of our abilities.
And just to be clear, um, there is no proposed manufacturing of cannabis or class-two operation, correct?
No, we're, we're not manufacturing it.
Okay. And the, um, going back to the delivery vehicle issue, which I believe the board, uh, engineer and asterisk are factoring in on the harvesting side, what do you anticipate as far as, uh, traffic in and out? Uh, if you had to estimate off these 10,000 square feet, you know, give us an idea of how much actual product would be in the farm during the course of the harvest, size-wise?
Uh, I would say probably close to about 500 pounds total. All of it will be transported in unmarked vehicle that I, I wouldn't have to give a description, but prefer not to, because, once again, it's security concerns. Um, not that we're really super concerned about it, it's just the best way to have security is to not call it out.
And how, I mean, how heavy do you anticipate the volume and traffic of that truck to be? How many trips do you anticipate?
It's, uh, probably hundreds, but we're not talking about a truck. It will not be a truck.
Okay, the vehicle, whatever it is, you anticipate that over the course of the four weeks, it would make how many trips?
I'd say less, less than 100 without knowing. We have dispensaries counting the minutes, hoping we get approved. So we'll be moving as much to the dispensaries as we can.
So basically, you're looking at an average of maybe five, uh, trips per day? Five vehicles per day?
No, I'm sorry. No, we're, we're looking at probably one vehicle at most per day. Like, transporting the finished product.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Just one vehicle.
Above multiple times?
Uh, potentially, but I-
I was trying to give an estimate to the board. You don't anticipate that there'll be more than five trips per day with that one vehicle?
No, that's a lot of driving, because most of the dispensaries that want to partner with us and the manufacturing companies are north of Denver. We haven't had any conversations with anyone down this way in Byron.
And the type of vehicle would be a standard Ford?
Uh, POV, yeah. A, a vehicle, a minivan.
Okay. And, uh, we've talked about security, and we've talked about odor mitigation. Um, can you address whether you anticipate any noise or light issues related to this operation?
No, so, much with other agricultural crops, um, light impacts that. They have photo periods where they're in a vegetative state, and then they go into a flowering state. If you had lights constantly on, it would hurt the crops. But more importantly, it would shine a light on where it's at, but also disturb the neighbors. And we're not okay with that. So what we're doing instead, since we're gonna have a fair amount of camera equipment, besides, uh, motion sensors, we're also gonna have motion trip, uh, infrared lighting. This way, if the lights are on, the cameras can see clearly, but we're not impacting the neighbors next to us.
And finally, um, related to prohibited uses in Franklin Township. Uh, Franklin Township has a general ordinance for all districts that prohibits certain uses. Uh, basically, uh, constituting a public nuisance by reason of dissemination of noxious, toxic, or corrosive fumes from odors or dust, noise of vibration exceeding the average intensity, or noise of vibration occurring from other causes endangering the surrounding areas by reason of fire or explosion, producing, uh, objection, uh, I'm sorry, objectionable heat and wear, uh, resulting in electrical disturbances contributing to the pollution of water, creating any other objectionable condition which will endanger public health or safety or be to the detriment of the property's and the surrounding areas. Is there anything related to this operation that would fit into those, that criteria of prohibited uses?
No, this is standard farming.
And, uh, you are prepared to comply with NJAC 1730 and 38?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
And, uh, just to be clear, the, the property is currently farming assessed, but from conversations with the county tax assessors, what do you understand to, uh, happen to the portion that would be cultivated?
So, the, the cannabis farm site will be charged standard tax rate for the township as opposed to farmland assessed. Uh, they said it's actually fairly easy for them to do.
Did you, have any other questions?
I have one. You have, you have the, uh, a building, I guess that's where the, uh, freeze drying is gonna be.
In, within a trailer, yes.
So, how are you planning, I mean, you're in the electric back there, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're running-
So you're not gonna put, you're not gonna put like a generator out there that's gonna have to run 24 hours?
No, so, what I can say, and this kind of goes for our security orbit, so primary is gonna be underground-run wiring. It's the safest and realistically the best way to do it. Uh, our alternate would be, if we did lose power, temporary generator or potentially solar panels, depending on what works best for us. It's a fairly low power consumption operation. And then contingency, if we do have that big of a problem, like, you know, a tornado comes through and knocks out the root in this area, uh, I'm very good at pulling guard. And in the ability, we'll be pulling 24-hour guard on the site.
I just had a question. Um, is anybody else gonna testify regarding the process?
Uh, no, the process is primarily right here.
I understand, in general, the process, thinking maybe the board, or I would like to hear like, from beginning to end, what's happening, like, from the time you're getting seed, where it's going. And I'll tell you, because the engineer and I were looking at the regulations, and one of them indicates that cannabis cultivator should have at least the following storage areas, which must be segregated from each other. So there's at least four different, very specific segregated, um, areas. Storage for newly received, um, batches of unusable cannabis, usable cannabis. So there's a whole bunch of categories. It sounds like you have to have a very specific process as to how you're using the trailer.
Yes.
Or, I don't know, there should be a trailer, but, um, using your building, um, for this. So I think maybe if we can hear, like, beginning and end, what's happening, unless the board doesn't want to hear that. Hearing the process from where you get your seed, and how it ends up going out the door when it's done, and what's happening in the building.
So, first step would obviously be to get the seeds. There are several, uh, high-quality genetics companies that we're aware of that we would be purchasing the seeds directly through. Once we have the seeds, uh, we'll most likely start them, uh, in starters, potentially just to make sure we have the crops up, because, uh, well, the biggest threats to cannabis seedling is mice. We all know what farms have. So, it'll be in seedlings until, in seed starters until they're big enough. Then they'll be planted in the dirt, uh, where there'll be water, it'll be under the sun, the rain, all that goodness. And then, towards the end of the summer, so as the light starts going back to 12-hour days, it will go into what's called the flowering phase. That's when it starts producing the actual buds in the flower. From that point on, it's only the last four weeks where cannabis actually has the smell. So you're talking at most one month. Once they're deemed ripe, um, which we use microscopes to do, which is actually one of the big parts of our security, you can't tell if it's ready to go unless you're on the property. So, once that's done, we will go through and cut the tops off the plants, which has the highest quality stuff. That will be immediately freeze-dried. Once that's done, it'll be packaged and taken to a dispensary after state approvals. Everything has to be lab-tested. There are minimum requirements for mold, bacteria, et cetera. Once the, uh, once the lab approves it, then we can give it to the dispensaries, and they can sell it.
Where are you growing the seeds?
Uh, we're gonna be ordering in the seed start, at least at the beginning. There is a potential where we'll cultivate our own seeds, but that's not in the immediate plans.
So you're getting seedlings, not seeds?
No, we're-
Seeds are gonna start.
We're gonna start the seeds. We're gonna order-
Yeah, I know, but where? What location?
There's various, uh, genetics companies throughout the country.
Now, where are you gonna start? Where are you gonna put the starter at to grow the seeds?
We'll probably just put them outside, raised up on maybe a table or something.
Okay.
Within the same 10,000-square?
Yeah, everything's within, if, any, anything involving the business takes place in that 10,000-square feet.
So after you cut off the tops of the plants, what do you do with the rest of the remaining plant and roots and so forth?
Second pass, uh, to get the lower stuff. And then, with the roots, the leaves, the stems, the branches, all that, uh, in accordance with state law, will go through a grinding machine and be mixed with, uh, galmonor for mulching, or not, for, uh-
Fertilizer?
Fertilizer, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Any other questions?
How do you plan to irrigate the crop?
Uh, there's existing, uh, well out there, so primarily we'll just be using a hose. We're talking a very small area, so it can be fairly easily done with a hose.
And, uh, do you have an estimate of the amount of order, of at least the maximum that it would use during the course of growing season?
Through the course of growing season, we anticipate using well less than 100,000 gallons of water. The thing with cannabis that kind of separates it from its relative plants like tomatoes and all that is it does prefer a slightly drier soil. So the requirement, like, a farmer who is farming tomatoes will need to use more water than us when we farm the cannabis. And obviously, the more it rains, the less water we need.
And is there anything that you would be using on the, um, on the plants that would affect, uh, that would, did anybody farm the grown, uh, where, I know there's not a set for sewer there, but is there any, um, effect on the general run of the operation cultivating these plants?
Absolutely not. Because when it comes time for you to fertilize it, or fertilize, we're just top dressing with compost. We have found that using nature as opposed to deploying chemicals on the plants works a whole lot better and it's a whole lot cheaper.
How often does the state come and inspect everywhere?
To our knowledge, the only time to get an inspection is at initial set-up. I haven't heard anything about additional inspections. But what I can say is, the council and all that will always have an open invitation there. Because the best way, I think, for people to understand what we're doing is to come see it. I mean, some of the neighbors I talked to were so happy, like, "I can't wait to come see your security. I can't wait to come see the plants." You know, it was, it was pretty good, wasn't it?
How many other outside grow facilities are in Jersey?
Just one. It's, uh, owned by Nova Farms. Uh, one of my friends works there, and their outdoor is seven acres. I know, was very, very pleased with them, based off the numbers I'm hearing from the checks the township's getting, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your service.
And I'd like to call, uh, William L. Piper at this. You've already been sworn in-
Yes.
-and given your name and address.
Yes.
And you are one of the main parts, main members in the corporation, applying for this area, correct?
Yes.
And can you tell us, um, the proposed use of this cannabis cultivation operation? Um, how- And can you tell us the proposed use of this cannabis cultivation operation, how that is inherently, an inherently beneficial use?
Yes.
So, this proposed project site is already in a zone that permits agriculture, which is itself a use that promotes the general welfare as inherently beneficial. This is evidenced by the preferential treatment given to farming operations both through the rights of farm legislation, preferential tax treatment, and public funding of farmland preservation. Furthermore, the New Jersey Department of Agriculture specifically states for all of us, farmland preservation is an important part of keeping Jersey green and prosperous. Preserve farmland limits urban sprawl, protects our water and soil, provides us with an abundance of locally grown farm products, and maintains our connection to the land and the longstanding agricultural conditions that earn our reputation as the garden state. And I'd like to remind everybody that we are the garden state and yet urban sprawl is still here within the township. We now have two super Wawa's, strip malls, vast food chains, and a multitude of housing developments going on. Yet still, funding for farmland preservation has been approved multiple times by statewide referendums. County municipal level governments have also supported the program financially and procedurally. Desire to preserve farms and keep farms operated is based on its inherent benefit to the general But the risk of continuing to lose farmland due to financial concerns of the farmers and municipalities is very evident. As a matter of fact, in the township's master plan, they also state that profitability and sustainability of farms is of major concern. And it should be of value concern, considering the agriculture in our township is down. When you actually look at the Franklin Township Farmland Preservation Plan, from years 1984 to 2019, total agriculture in our township is down almost 44%. So, some of you might be asking like, "Why is it down so much?" The reality is, it's very, very difficult to be profitable farming. It's very risky, there's a lot of unknowns, it's a lot of hard work, and you have the majority of farmers in our township who are a lot older, and they're either retired from farming or they're moving on from this world. And they're passing down their properties and their farms to the next generation, and that next generation is my age, I'm 37 years old. And I'm a high school teacher, college professor, I have a stable job, I have a stable income, I have benefits, I have vacation, all that sort of stuff, and there's a lot of people like me that are getting these farms. And they're like, "Why, why would I give up all this stability? I have family, I have a home, a mortgage, everything to take care of. Why am I gonna give this up to go farm something that's risky?" So, what do they do? They sell the farm, they subdivide it for houses, and I think that's kinda something that we're all seeing here in this township right now. So, the influx of revenue from preservation, the revenue from, like the influx of revenue from preservation, the revenue from cannabis cultivation will also serve the same purpose, allowing farms to continue operating, thereby limiting urban sprawl. Increasing farm profits and longevity while simultaneously helping quell the concerns of the township, of farm sustainability and profitability as to be in the master plan. And let's just put it in perspective, everybody. If we just took, I'll draw some other comparisons later, but if we looked at a bushel of corn, a bushel of corn weighs about 55 pounds. A bushel of corn sold on the market, you get about $4.50 per bushel. You have to produce a tremendous amount of corn in order for it to be profitable. If I compared that to cannabis, and I took a 55-pound bushel of cannabis, cannabis isn't measured in bushels, but let's just say it's a 55-pound bushel of cannabis, that would be about $55,000 to $60,000. That's profitability. This crop can be helpful for smaller farms where the one-time infusion of money from selling development rates is not large enough to sustain the farming operation for long. This proposed use is a regular yearly boost to farming operation, allowing reinvestment and reinvestment into other areas of the farm as well. Now, cannabis is regulated differently than any other crop. However, as, as my partner Jim mentioned, it grows just like every other crop. It is a plant. It has roots, it photosynthesizes, it breaks down CO2 into a carbon sugar and releasing oxygen. It uses water, it uses sunlight, it uses every other nutrient just like any other plant would do. Additionally, cannabis is inherently beneficial in that it has medicinal and therapeutics benefits that include pain reduction, improved sleep performance, cancer management, and relaxation, to name a few. Although, as only recently legal in New Jersey, studies have shown that legalization in other states helps reduce the consumption of opioids. Lastly, the municipality has the ability to tax up 2%. I also wanna put on the record that the municipality never wrote the ordinance to tax us 2%. However, we want to be good community members. I am from this community, I grew up here, I love my community, I love my neighbors, and I wanna be able to, if I can produce something that's profitable and other people can benefit from it, that's a win.
Anything else related to your inherent benefit? And an alternative way to meet the positive criteria besides being inherently beneficial is to show that the property is particularly suitable for this purpose. So, can you explain how this site is particularly suitable to this purpose?
Yes. So, so this site particularly suitable for this use, one, because it's, as we already mentioned a couple times, it's a small operation. It is 10,000 square feet. To put it in perspective, because some people might not be able to visualize or think about what 10,000 square feet looks like, we did the football analogy. However, think of two basketball courts, that's 10,000, about 10,000 square feet. Or, in acres, it's .23 acres, it's less than a quarter acre. Also, the site is sparsely populated. Where the grow area is, I mean, my, my neighbors have double-digit acreage around me that there's no development on, besides a couple residential houses. Additionally, the property includes a residence, which my father will still can continue to live there, which also adds to, one, just security, and also day-to-day operations for the facility. Also, there's a lot of barriers to entry. As Jim mentioned earlier, we have multiple points to access to the operation if somebody had to access it. Everything's fenced in, there's really only one ease of access through that one main gate. It's also in an old arena where both my parents used to practice, that's been there for 25, 30 years. And it has 25, 30-year-old hedgerows, picker bushes, poison ivy, trees. You cannot, you cannot seek into it. Finally, I'm not saying that every property is suitable, because every property obviously is not suitable for this use. However, my family's property is uniquely suited considering the property is literally highlighted multiple, multiple times in the Franklin Township Farmland Preservation Plan as a target, as I quote, "target farm," due to the fact that 100% of the property has prime farming soil. Not to mention it's also located in an agricultural development area.
Can I direct your attention ever to this, this plan for name? On this property line, on the side where the cannabis cultivation operation would be, are there any residences, residences along here?
So, I'll just bring it to you. So, my neighbor right here directly in line with this front pasture right in the middle is Ms. Mignette, which I think she's here tonight. And then her daughter Tina lives right next door, right in front, actually a little bit, little bit in front of my dad's line of view.
And then behind that, where the cannabis operation is, what is there?
So, there's nothing directly behind it. If you look at the small picture up here, so, this is about close to 15 acres of woods. Our closest neighbor directly behind us is about, I think it's like close to a mile behind us on Clark Ave. Mr. Daley lives right here, and that's it.
And apart from by Ms. Mrs. Mignette's son back parallel with the, with the field, is there any residents in that area?
No, you can kinda see, you can see the line right here where the property line divides. Ms. Mignette's son, Ed Penny, owns this property right here, which is just field, and right behind there is a bunch of woods.
And the nearest neighbor in the back of the property, how far away would you ask?
Uh, the nearest neighbor's probably close to 15 acres away or close to a mile away, roughly.
Okay. And is there a particular way that winds tend to go through that property?
Yes. So, what's nice about the property, it's kinda really hard to tell here, but the property is almost positioned north-south, almost perfectly. In the summer months, or in the warmer months, winds typically blow from the southern region to the northern region. So, they're blowing from the street back to the woods. So, everybody's worried about smell, and I'll get more smell a little bit later, but the reality is, wind is actually blowing away from the residential houses to the woods and there's nobody behind us. And Mr. Daley doesn't care.
That's your understanding for speaking in the beginning, right?
Multiple times.
And one last thing that you may have touched on briefly, but I just wanna emphasize it. On this particular farm that would be potentially being preserved as a farm through the added income of the cannabis operation, I, this is, this is one of the target farms in the Franklin Township Preservation, Farm and Preservation Day, correct? And part of the reason, in addition to its size and location, is that it's 100% prime soil, correct?
100% prime soil and also listed as 77.9% tillable ground. The reason being is because there's a chunk of woods in the back.
And that woods would also serve as a natural buffer and...
Absolutely. Plus, my neighbor's teenager's behind me, out woods.
And the goal, the first goal that I, and this is going to the no substantial impairments in intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. The first goal identified in Franklin Township's 20, or 2004 master plan is to preserve the quality of life in Franklin Township. And the first objective under this goal is to retain the rural character of the community. Does the proposed variance in any way impair the intent and purpose of the master plan?
No. As a matter of fact, it actually achieves the goals of the master plan, some goals of the open space plan, and also satisfies areas of the farmland preservation plan. One of the goals of the master plan and the open space plan is to preserve the rural character and quality of life. At the end of the day, this crop allows us to keep this a farm, an actual farm. It seems very easy to subdivide properties nowadays and sell them as houses, but I would genuinely like to keep this a farm. And by default, having a farm helps achieve the goal simply by, because farms are rural by nature. And farming by its nature improves the quality of life and being connected to their natural roots. The other part of the master plan is, it says attracting and retaining agricultural businesses. Now, I had mentioned earlier that total agriculture in the township is down 44% from 1984 to 2019. The goal of the master plan is to attract or retain agricultural businesses. What better opportunity right now where you have an actual agricultural business wanting to come into the township who really's already been here, family that's been here since the 60s, a younger man who eventually will take over this property, who wants to keep their farm. Now, we can attract an agricultural business, kind of, but we can also help retain it by now producing something that's profitable, and then I can reinvest back into my family's property to help bolster other agricultural production. Other parts of the master plan, economic expansion and diversification. We've done that tremendously in this township over the years. I remember when I was a kid, and I'm being serious with my statements, I remember when I was a kid, Wawa used to be an actual deli on the corner of Corey and Main Road. And now, we have two Super Wawa's. I love Wawa coffee, I'm a big fan. But we have two Super Wawa's, Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, strip malls, housing develops going on, which is fine. I understand that's necessary. However, we are supposed to be an agricultural rural community. That is part of Franklin Township's website under the about us literally says rural agricultural community. And in order for us to keep our rural agricultural community, we also have to expand and diversify into agricultural growth. And this is one of those niche crops that can be profitable, and now we're expanding and diversifying our portfolio here in the township rather than growing soybeans and corn and alfalfa.
And the last question, and we've already been over, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a couple more. At least one more anyway. This is also part of the master plan, which I kinda already mentioned earlier, but sustainability and profitability. I mentioned $4.50 per bushel. Soybeans are $10 per bushel roughly, potatoes are $13 a bushel, and cannabis would be about $55,000 a bushel. Which again, allows greater reinvestment back into the farm and a shot of tax revenue back into the township as well, which could be used to satisfy aspects of the open space plan. At the end of the day, farming up to 10,000 square feet of cannabis is not in any way impair or contradict the first, the purpose of the master plan. If at anything, it absolutely achieves a lot of those goals.
And I know we've touched on a lot of the next topic, but does the proposed variance in any way impair the need for the whole zoning ordinance?
Yeah, no. So, this property is a Highland rural residential. So, as referenced in the Highlands, in the applicable ordinances section, it permits farming in all its branches, restricting only obnoxious businesses like slaughterhouses and pigheries. Ordinance 253 of Highlands Rural Residential states any production of plants or animals useful to man, and I want to just make aside that human beings have used cannabis for, reported record 26,000 years as the earliest known record of cannabis use on fossils. So, we've been using this for a long time. It's only been very, very recently in our human history that we have banned it due to big corporation profit and political gain. I continue. So, useful man, including but not limited to livestock, poultry, fruits, vegetables, flowers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It does specifically prohibit two things, mining and landfilling. Furthermore, the Highlands also said that cannabis farming is agriculture and is a permitted use. The application does not substantially impair the intent of the prohibited use ordinance, while the prohibited uses include those that, and I quote, "constitute a public nuisance by reason of dissemination of noxious, toxic, or corrosive fumes, smoke, odor, or dust." This project only produces an odor for a very short amount of time, as Jim mentioned, about four weeks roughly, during each harvest cycle. And to be quite honest with you, ladies and gentlemen, odor is, as far as bad odor, is very subjective. I'd also like to note that at one point, it's a personal story, my parents had almost 100-headed cow, about 20 horses, pigs, dogs, and my neighbor's chickens would always find their way onto the property as well to join the farm. We had a monster, monster manure pot. Nobody complained. Maybe it did, but I don't know. I don't remember anybody complaining. But at the end of the day, did you get fined for that? I don't think so. Most, all my, my neighbors have been there my entire life, or most of my life. And we usually keep to ourselves, and at the end of the day, I don't remember any issues with any of that. So, the size of this cultivation is 10,000 square feet, and the distance from residential houses is very typically far. I mean, we measured it out. Our closest neighbor to the actual operation is Ms. Mignette. She's roughly about 400, 500 feet away. And then our farthest neighbor is almost a mile away that borders the property. The area of the farm is selected for two reasons. Obviously, I already mentioned all the hedgerows, act as a smell barrier. It takes advantage of the prevailing winds because the winds blow south and north in the warmer months, so blowing away from residential houses. Also, a short smell window, only about four weeks, we mentioned that. We also mentioned freeze drying as well. So, basically, we took a huge process that could potentially cause odor that takes two to three months, and we boiled it down to basically 24 to 48 hours. Also, myself and Jim, or me, or Jim, went to every single neighbor. We spoke with every neighbor except one, that was Mrs. Santangelo, she's an older woman, and we left a letter on her doorstep saying if she had any concerns, to give us a call. We spoke with every single neighbor. Now, when I was told to my face by every one of my neighbors that property borders ours, they had, they had no issue, "Do whatever you want." I'm being a little conceited, saying, "Do whatever you want." But at the end of the day, they didn't care. They had a couple, some, some neighbors had a couple of concerns, we talked about concerns, and at the end of it, we're like, "All right, that's fine." Now, apparently, there's a couple neighbors in here that... Now, apparently, there's a couple of neighbors in here that border my property that told me to my face that they were fine with it. And now they might be coming out against it, I'm not sure. We'll find out. But I was verbally told to my face, Jim was told to his face, but we were both told, both of our faces, that it was fine.
Can I ask if there were an issue with the smell despite your anticipation that there's not going to be, are there other steps that can be taken to further mitigate any small issues?
Yes. So as Jim already kind of pointed out, what we're running with the freeze dryer, we don't really anticipate any smell coming out of that to begin with, but just to be safe, we're going to be having carbon filters attached to it that help filter out any excess smell that may come out of it. We're also going to be planting companion plants. And for those of you who don't know what a companion plant is, it's basically a beneficial plant where plants, they actually can be buddies. So plants can help each other. So we're going to be planting companion plants that not only help our cannabis plants, but also specific plants that produce a floral smell. So some of the plants that we're going to be planting are lemon mom, lavender. We want to plant jasmine, but we're not sure if jasmine's going to be hardy enough. Maribolds, pagonias. And I'm sure there's a few other plants that we'll be able to find that produce a really nice... Lilac produces a great smell as well. So we'll be also planting them. Not only does it beautify the property, but it also creates a natural smell that is very pleasant. We already mentioned this earlier, but we are partnering with a stock and researcher. Already have done that. And he's planning on coming out and doing research to actually see how far smell travels. What is nice about that is we actually have some research. Hopefully, that can maybe squash some concerns of municipalities around the state, some of the boards around the state, and also some of the neighbors that are concerned with anti-smell. And then, you know, I just kind of want to point out, it's funny, you know, everybody's worried about the smell. It kind of confuses me a little bit considering we live in a farming community. When I was in high school, I used to work on a fruity nursery. We planted a lot of cilantro. I hate the smell of cilantro. Cilantro stinks. And you have freaking acres of cilantro behind residential houses. What are you going to do? Like, it is, you live in a farming area, and stuff stinks sometimes. If for some reason odor is an issue, other things that we plan on doing, putting up carbon impregnated fabric around our fences if odor is an issue, just to help even more. But at the end of the day, if smell, if the smell was so strong, then why, since the 1980s, was Franklin Township flying police helicopters to look for illegal grow operations in the township? As a matter of fact, my dad would always tell this story. He told this story to me a couple of times. Actually had a police helicopter land in one of our fields because they were using infrared, and they saw our manure pile light up, and they thought it was an illegal grow operation. So if the smell is so strong, wouldn't it just be easier just to kind of drive around and just smell out the window just to see where the area is? So, you know, I just kind of wanted to throw that in there.
Just to clarify, state please, right?
I'm sorry, state, state, please. I apologize, I apologize.
I think that's all my questions. If anyone has any other questions?
Do you guys have any questions? I think Dave, why don't you give your report, please? Why don't you give your report?
Sure. And then we can open it up to the public. We had done a report dated June 24, 2024, based upon the information that's been submitted. And most, everything that's been in my review letter is what, you know, they've spoken to because they've been provided with this. But this is a Highland Rural Residential District. It's not necessarily an agricultural district. And in the Highland Rural Residential District, cannabis is not a specifically permitted use. That's why they're here, for a use variance. The Franklin Township Ordinance O-6X21 specifically says that the growing and cultivation of cannabis is only permitted in industrial zones. And this is not an industrial zone. As such, the applicant has requested the D variances, and that's why we're here tonight. There's another, another D variance associated with this because in the section of our ordinance 25396C, it says that no more than one principal use can be used on a parcel, and this would technically be two. So they're kind of hand in glove and go together. You get one to get both. But those are the two use variances associated with what we're talking about tonight. We've heard testimony that this is only for the cultivation, and there will be no manufacturing of cannabis as part of this application. 10,000 square feet of cultivation area is what we've heard of, and a business trailer in that enclosed area for storage and for processing or packaging of the cultivated cannabis. Since this is not permitted in the township, we don't have a lot of regulations as if it was permitted. So we kind of roll back on the state regulations that we heard testimony about tonight, the Administrative Code 17:30. And some of that is what is in my review letter. Like paragraph four, it specifically states it can't happen on valued or assessed or land for, or not assessed, I'm sorry, farmland. It can't happen on farmland, assessed land. So I guess there's a way to do that. You can un-assess the land. I don't really know how that works. It's really not a function of what we do here. But there's certain state regulations that they're going to have to deal with. Also, they were talking about the fencing. That's another specific state regulation. And I just want some clarification on this. I know you had testimony that said you spoke with the state, but 17:30, 10.3C, I think. It says, "The property shall, that contains an outdoor grow area, and the outdoor grow area itself shall each be securely surrounded by fencing and lock gates." So around the entire perimeter. When I read that, it tends to say the entire property needs to be fenced, and then a specific grower. So that's something that you're really going to have to deal with at the state level, but it's a concern from where we are today.
Am I allowed to clarify this?
Go ahead.
So the property is completely fenced in. Number one.
With an eight-foot fence?
With a six-foot fence. So, and now, let's think about this logically. Does it make logical sense to completely encompass a farm that is supposed to be prime farmland with an eight-foot chain link stock gate fence? It doesn't make sense. It actually kind of goes against the pre-impact as well. So...
My client is fully prepared to comply with whatever requirements the state has.
And that's what I was calling, that's what I was calling that.
If the state tells him that he needs an eight-foot fence, then he will, you know, do that. But he's believed that the state does not require that around the entire farm.
It would tend to make sense. I just wanted to bring that up so we were aware of it at this point in time.
And we did talk to the state already about that, and they're totally fine with the two fences that we have. And I had documentation for that too.
That's fine. So then, and I don't know why I necessarily put this in here, but in the review letter, paragraph 12, the township only permits of variants as necessary for eight-foot tall fence in this particular... That's really a subject of site plan and not necessarily the use variance today. I don't mean to confuse the item, but I just wanted to bring that up so we should know that you should be prepared at the time of site plan if you're asking for a variance for the entire parcel or just the double as you have to go.
And we are actually requesting a waiver of the site plan if that's possible because it is just limited to two fences. But if it's not possible, we would certainly obviously request that variance at the same time. In the meantime, if the waiver is granted, we would request that variance.
Some of the other items on our review letter have been addressed by the plans that we received today, and you should have them on your, on the dais there. We heard testimony about the number and types of vehicles, security noise, light. Really, that is not a whole lot of engineering persight with this because, you know, we're just growing in a 10,000-square-foot area.
Alright, thanks, Dave.
Can I ask two follow-up questions?
Sure.
Just to be clear, when you talk about the zoning for the Highland Rural Residential, the second primary use listed is farming in all its origins, correct? So even though it's not designated as agricultural in its title, farming in any of its branches is the second permitted use for that zoning?
Right, but it's not permitted in township. Cannabis itself is not permitted.
I understand, I understand your argument about cannabis. I'm just saying that farming itself is a permitted use in the PRR zoning. In fact, it's the second permitted use after residential. A is residential, B is farming, in all its forms. Obviously, the township's position is that marijuana would leave the barriers.
Correct, and that's correct.
Okay. And there was one other thing. You had mentioned that the township... Or did you say the township doesn't allow cannabis growth? You're just referring to the fact that you're requiring this variance, correct? Cannabis cultivation? Because I believe, if I'm understanding what you were saying correctly, that by not disallowing cannabis cultivation, they, your position is they're allowing it, but only in the industrial zone?
Correct, that's what the ordinance says.
But just to be clear, they didn't disallow it, they chose to allow it. It's just that your position is that that ordinance applies only to the industrial zone?
That's correct.
And that's why you're saying that we are here today for this variance?
Correct.
And if the township had wondered, they obviously could have said that they did not want cannabis cultivation anywhere in the township at that point.
Well, more importantly, I mean, you're putting them on the spot. More importantly...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to do that, I'm just trying to clarify.
I mean, if they wanted to allow cultivation in this zone, they would have said they allowed it. Since they didn't, you're here for variance.
But my only point is they were not... Correct. My only point is they were not opposed to the actual idea of cultivation of cannabis in Franklin Township because they could have at that point disallowed it everywhere if they had chosen to do so.
I don't think they addressed it at all. It's just that it's not allowed in this, in this zone. That's why you're here.
Okay. Anything?
Any other questions? James, Dave? Okay, let's open it up in public. Back in. Opened by Anthony Gaiton, seconded by Dan DeSesre. All in favor? Aye, opposed, or tensions? Okay, anybody from the public like to make any comments regarding this application? If you would, please come forward. Everybody has three minutes to speak. Raise your right hand, please. Just want to tell the truth about the test run you're going to get. Name and address.
Michael Cosgrove, 103 Eisenhower Drive, in Manhattan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Cosgrove. I'm currently resident of the township. Although I currently live there, I grew up here in Franklinville. Neighborhood, that's a no school, that's a no school. And I still have family. The ultimate goal, though, is hopefully move back here to Franklinville. Billy and I grew up together. We've been best friends since I was 12 and 13. As a matter of fact, I used to help the fire profoundly on their farm. They all had eight, eight horse stalls. And that's currently where they're planning on growing cannabis, that farm. This town has been known to be a farming community. And my hopes is that it stays that way. I fully support what Billy and Jim are proposing with Mystic The Towne of Farms. 1813 Dutch Mill Road is more than suited for this use. It would be nice to see agriculture come back to the township and for this township to actually support the continuation of its agricultural heritage. The project proposed by Mystic The Towne of Farms is an opportunity not only to revitalize the local economy, but also to honor and build modern communities rich farming traditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jeff Tish.
Raise your right hand, please. Just want to tell the truth about the test run you're going to get. Name and address.
1194 First Glen.
Name?
Jeff Tish.
Okay, thank you.
I own 78, it's right across from Billy's house. And I'm all for them. You take the future farmer to America. This is how it's going to start. To produce corn, right now, to produce it, is five dollars a bushel to produce. It's now bringing four bucks. Okay, so we're at a loss here. This is your future farmer, right here. When he gets on his feet with this, he's going to branch out, like he said, and do other things. So I have no idea how he's going to produce corn or beans or anything else and put five bucks a bushel out to plant it and get close to four bucks a bushel back. He's going to lose money. So I'm all for what he's doing on a neighbor. He gets his, he's, more or less said, the day once he gets his... He makes some money, he's going to branch out to other agricultural products.
Thank you, Mr. Tish. Come forward, next. Are you together?
Kind of. Can we be together?
Yes, you can. Raise your right hand, please. Just want to tell the truth about the test run you're going to get.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Susan May, 1839 Dutch Mill Road, which I don't exist according to what was told here today. I live closest to the property. It's like my house is there and the property mine is here. But I, that's why I decided to speak up because all of a sudden I don't need to.
Okay.
I'm just speaking to all of you.
Speak into the microphone, please.
I'm just speaking to him. I'm 1861 Dutch Mill Road. I live two houses down. I live in the middle. She's here, me, and her.
Are you opposed to this?
I just have some questions, and I just would like to ask some questions. I get some answers. That's why I came.
Okay, ask the questions.
I thought you were going to go first. I got a lot of questions.
Come on, you guys are together, let's get together.
First of all, if you came around to the house...
You have to speak, you have to speak it to the microphone.
Hold it, hold it. You got to speak, you got to speak to us.
I wanted to tell Billy that he's telling the truth that when he came around to the house in the summer, I did agree because he caught me off guard. And, but when he had a chance to sit back and think about it, there's a lot of things that I don't agree. I first, my husband and I think that by having this in our neighborhood could cause a lot of riffraff people coming in and out. And we have a nice little neighborhood right now. It's kind of quiet, and we're fine. We don't need this. And who's to say that in the future, that somehow or another he will enlarge it? You know, he'll be doing good, possibly, and then he'll want to do better if he'll enlarge it. So then we're going to be better. I'm a little nervous right now.
Sorry, don't be nervous.
I just, my husband and I just agree, ours having. And my brother across the street, that can't be here, and I do too much, are definitely... They agree. They don't want to leave here. And they do like across the street. I'm surprised, Billy, that there aren't more people here that live on our street through our building. But anyway, that's how I feel.
Thank you.
My thing, thank you.
Thank you.
Now I get three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Susan May. This isn't, you can't even... It's not working.
Christian's not working. The microphone's not working?
I don't think it's working. I can talk loud now, but I'm... I have a pretty good... Okay.
You got to speak to us, you got to speak to us.
Okay, I'm going to speak to you guys. Sorry. I haven't been important so long, forgive me. Okay, so I'm a school bus driver, and I park my bus right between my house and his property. I'm probably the closest to what he's building here. And I can see it all. And he came to my house, and I wasn't expecting him either with my husband. And my husband's like, oh, he doesn't really care. I'm like, okay. I'm like, okay, I guess it's not a big deal, I don't know. I was concerned about the smell, I was concerned about how big it might get. I was also concerned, was it closer to my house, and I think it is, pretty sure it is. I live on, if you're looking at his property, I live on the right side. When they said there was no neighbors on that side, I was like, what are you talking about, maybe I'm not, I don't exist, you know? So anyway, I'm a little concerned, like, what happens when I go to sell my house? Is anyone going to want to live there? Is anyone going to want to buy it? I have allergies, I'm concerned about, and my bus is going to smell like cannabis, I'm driving around, and I'm picking up special needs kids, you know? I don't know. So I'm concerned about those things. And I tried to voice some of my concerns, and we did talk to Billy, and I think he's a great guy, no problem with he, or his dad, I just came here tonight to find out a little bit more about it, because we really didn't go through a lot, and I didn't understand all that was going on. So this is like the information for me. I got a little upset when I was not even brought up that I even lived next door, like once I had a house, no one lives there, like, what? What do you mean no one lives there? And I would love it if he had his property with neighbors far away, but that's not the way it is, that's the problem. And I'm concerned, what if I want to sell my house and nobody wants to buy it?
Understandable.
I have a question. Is there anybody else in Howard area who's supposed to accept that kind of farm?
There's one, they said, near the Deptford area, right, or Woodbury.
I'm not sure where exactly, I know the owner, I'm not exactly sure what town he's in.
So the answer is no. That's the answer, no, there's nothing.
Keep it that way.
All right, thank you, anyone else like to be heard? Please go forward. Raise your right hand, please, swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give. Name and address.
Jimmy Blazer, one three five Summit Ave, Deptford, New Jersey. Gentlemen, I, Jim mentioned me earlier, I was a Lance Corporal in the United States Marine Corps, former machine gunner in third battalion, eighth Marines. And my family come, I have a member of my family that has fought in every single war since the Civil War. Talking to my dad constantly, he was in the Navy. We both talk about how the American dream is bleeding. Now, this American dream is what I voluntarily signed up to die for. Being a machine gunner, you know, it's tough work, you're going to war, they're going to be targeting you. I understand that this is a very touchy subject, but my question to you all is, who would be better than to lead this front and take this on when there are so many questions, than a veteran that committed his life to this country? A mentor, and a teacher, and an amazing role model to this town's youth? Both these gentlemen will offer you attention in detail, communication and collaboration with the community. And again, to go on what Jim had said, when I had gotten out of the Marine Corps, I had no idea what to do. I was a former team leader of a machine gun team, I led five of the best Marines you could possibly hope to meet in your whole life. Now, I EAS, which is getting out, I came home. Less than twenty-four hours later, I was thrown into my childhood house that I grew up in, and I went from leading the team of Marines to leading the head of the unemployment line. Now, that wrecked my mentality. I fell into a pit of Great Depression. I couldn't talk to anybody, I didn't want to talk to my family or friends, because I didn't want them to think poorly of me. Now, I had to do some soul searching to find myself again. I chose to take the route of medical cannabis, and that helped me a tremendous amount. One of my best friends went to the VA, I'm sorry, this is very hard for me to talk about, one of my best friends went to the VA and was prescribed opioids, and three months later killed himself on Christmas Day. I won't yell, I'm bringing this up just so you all think of this, this is bigger than just recreational use. There are, on the recreational side, there may be a lack of self-control that some people show, but I do not want that to overshadow the benefits of this plant and how it can affect the community. And what better community than to be a pillar of that beacon of hope for veterans in Franklin? Thank you.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please, swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give.
Yes, I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Allison Yai, seventeen seventy-seven, that's the name. I came here mostly to find out exactly what the variance was, but if listening to some of the, I don't want to say lies, but basically they were, Billy Piper Jr. came over to my children's house, and my son wanted to check out the housing. And if, he was told that there was, or they were told, there would be three chain link tents, ten feet high. Also told that you can't get through the head roof. I have all rise of the back, the knees, and had open heart surgery, and I was on that property. So it's accessible. The fence around it had been knocked down by horses, deer, whatever. Billy also told me that someone who was raised in marijuana on my cannabis property, I went searching around, looking for it. I didn't find it, whether it's there or not, I don't know, but that's why I was going there. And the other thing that bothers me, and I think that's why I came here mostly, was the price of the property. I checked on the National Association of Elders, and it said on old, the value of property in a community that raises, pot will go up, but the housing closest to the facility costs decreases. So when you think about it, once that bullet is fired, you're not going to bring it back. And I just hope that you consider these things.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Raise your right hand, please.
Chrissy Harpkins. I've lived in this community for over thirty-eight years now. My son is William Alpiter. Obviously, I'm here to support him, but also importantly, I'm here to support our local farming community. Everyone in this room should ask themselves if we want to become another Philly suburb with the crime and problems that come with suburbia, or do we want to be a quiet rural farm town? We have to decide, suburbs or farm. This is a farming community, I mean, I believe it says on the website, rural farming, and I'm starting to see concrete. And it's a shame, because you know what, you can't bring the farm land back, once that's developed, it's gone. This is a way to maintain our beautiful town. When my son's father and I were together, we traveled the country very young, and worked incredibly hard, daily K, in maintaining our farm. It's hard to make a full-time living farming, and what my son and Jim are proposing is a way for my son to keep the property farm and not turning into another housing development. I hope you guys really consider doing the right thing and granting members there to make me keep this farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please, swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give. Name and address.
I'm Amy Garretcoff, I live at three West Terry Street in Winona, Jersey, not far from here. I'm really here tonight to support Billy. I've known Billy for a long time, just think about it. If you, as a group, look at the amount of work that these two gentlemen have put in to making this presentation possible, to share an office with the med school to teach you, I can tell you, I have not seen anyone put that much work into anything, and the amount of passion and care over the course of the past year for him to make this a possibility. So this gentleman over here talked about the future. I have been trying to move my family to Franklinville for the past year, you know, a lot on the housing market right now, right? I've been on three houses, I haven't been successful yet, I have three children, twelve, eight, and six, so we're talking about the future. We're not talking about the past, or stereotypes that may or may not be true, but this is the way the future is going, and we are talking about building something great. This gentleman right here, and this gentleman right here, I actually don't think there could be two better people in the entire world to do this. I could not ever have to serve, and I am blessed because of the freedom that this gentleman afforded, and this gentleman right over here. And they're telling stories that the only way they were able to help themselves is because of something that a plant that grows in the ground. If there's any way to help people who help protect our freedom, why would we stop? I just don't understand that. So, much like Billy's mom said, I do encourage you to do the right thing and think about the future, not to look at the past, but think about people like me who are trying to move into a town like this because of what it means. I live in Winona, we want to get out, because every lot's a quarter acre, right? And everyone knows everyone else's business. And Franklinville's a beautiful country, I love driving down here, and that's why we want to get in. So I highly encourage you to please, 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 give these guys what they're asking for based on the sacrifices they have made in time and service for our country.
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give?
Excuse me?
You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give?
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is, I'm from New Orleans, I live in a Parker Township, New Jersey, and I am not going to speak in front of people, so I apologize for that, but I am speaking out of my heart.
Don't be nervous, we're regular people here.
I'm standing up here because I passed someone in Maryland, and he is one of the most hardest-working, dedicated people, and if there is anything that the state or the township need, I guarantee you my nephew will do it above and beyond. I grew up on that property, I know that property, I know the ring, the ring, the horse ring, I guess show horses and ride horses too, like I said, I was on that farm. I asked my nephew, we had a debate about this, because he asked me how I felt about all this, and I'm like, well, I don't know, I wasn't so sure about it. But after he talked to me about it, first of all, if anyone goes onto the property, that's stressful, we shouldn't be doing that. And I can tell you that where this is getting good, because he in detail told me, if that fence is inside another fence, yes, there is that broken-down fence, I saw that four years ago, that fence, and yes, there is shrubbery and everything, the poison ivy and everything's on it, but I guarantee my whole suite is, there is a doubt in my mind that my nephew and his partner, I don't believe that well, but I know this man right here, he has busted his rear end his whole life, and I would love to see my mom's property be brought up, because if he's making fifty-five thousand dollars or something a bushel, I guarantee you, it's going to look like Southport, or Dallas, you know what I'm talking about? And I would love that for my mom, you know, because there won't be any broken fences, he'll spend that money on that fence, I guarantee you. But I love my nephew, he likes it, because I'm not good at this, but thank you.
Fine job, thank you. Swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're going to give, name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Lisa Byrne, I live at six nineteen Judea, in Franklinville. I've been sitting here listening to all the positivity about Billy Piper, and I am a hundred and fifteen percent on board. I don't even care to even read this, I support Billy, and I hope you all support Billy. He is the most amazing man. He went to school with my son, he was actually a bridesmaid in my husband and I's wedding. He's family to me. What he's doing and the hard work that he has put into this, it's going to be positive for Franklinville. And I please hope you hear all the positivity that everyone's spoken about. I will be good.
Thank you. Swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give?
I do.
Name and address.
Daniel Thomas Wolfie, Wolf Hill Side Road, Los Angeles, Jersey. So just to give you guys a little bit of context of why I'm here, I know Billy, I've known for years, I'm also a veteran, I was in the Marine Corps from two thousand four to two thousand thirteen, I was infantryman, I got selected into Special Forces, Second Recon, and then was a foreign advisor, I did four deployments, two Iraq on Afghanistan, and one on a classified mission. Point to all that is, when I was Afghanistan, one of my main jobs was to train the Afghan police and Afghan army to go around and seek out cannabis farms, to burn them down, to run after the Taliban come and say, you now don't have an income, you work for us, you're going to poppy. Okay, lucky nothing, but then when I got rings, I became a cop in Deptford, and I realized everybody was hooked on these opioids, and I just helped, men are produced basically globally by allowing us to have it. So I did that for a while, I went to ground a year and a half, I realized I was arresting drug addicts that actually need help, and I'm taking the freedom, and I'm using case law to smell cannabis in their car, to get through their pockets, and get into searching them, and take over their freedom. I don't want to do that anymore. I saw that help as a VA, and that's what they offered me, there's same synthetic drugs that I was just arresting everybody for, and I didn't want anything to do with that. I went back to school, I figured out I wanted to learn something about psychology, because I have D PIs, I have PTSD, I have other injuries, but I wanted to learn, get my brain right, I get my body right. While I was there, I was the student violence organization president, and I realized how much veterans actually need help. I just thought we all kind of had it handled, we'd have figured it out our own way. Remember that we all like dispute twenty-two a day of killing themselves? That's not counting Texas and California, it's actually closer to fifty plus a day that are killing themselves, which is twenty thousand a year, that's been going on for decades now. We just can't handle what we did over there, what was done, whatever, like that's our own personal reason. But I realize we need help, and we need to start helping each other. I have my own personal story, one of my roommate squads, he just put a shotgun in his mouth, killed himself, his seven-year-old sister found him. Not explaining to this little girl that, that's a hero, that's a parent, you know, that's your hero, he's out there, he's fighting for you, he survived the war, couldn't survive the reality afterwards, and she's one that had to find him. And this doesn't fit the story, just everyone here knows that as a story like that, because there's so many killing themselves. Point to all that, just trying to give a little context of why we're a parent of this. Cannabis helped me, I was born ever addicted, that I had some problems, I need to get over it, cannabis helped me with chronic pain, with acute pain, it's an anti-inflammation, it helps with anti-depression, anti-anxiety, anything you can think of, it helps when we use it properly. Why do I talk to you guys? We need you guys as the representatives to allow access. That's all we basically asked for, is that, can you just allow us as veterans and everyone else to have access to a plant that is helpful, that we're not going to be addicted to, that's not going to end up being more crime breaking down the road we have.
Thank you. Time's up, yeah. Swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're about to give?
I do. Dave Marshall, sixty-seven New Road, Malaga. First, I just want to thank all the veterans that are in here, as many family members who are veterans, I myself would have been in the Air Force, except for my eyesight wouldn't allow it. I believe in what you're doing, I thank you for all, what you've done and what you've given for this country, it's really appreciated. That being said, I was born here in this township, I've lived in this township just shy of fifty years from the short span I was out in, like, before we lived here when I first moved down. I love the township, I've spoken at many meetings about that, and the last thing I wanted to do was see this town put a pop. Just rather see it stay the way it is as rural as possible, keep normal farmland, and I understand the financial aspect of it, it is a cash crop, it's a cash cow if you want to look at that. Colorado was one of the forefronts of this in our country, and at that point in time, they were making a lot of money hand over fist, now there's one and a half facilities a week closing in Colorado, but they realized the market's on the downturn, it's pating out. We don't have that mistake, because we haven't got to that kind of production yet, but it's going to happen at some point. There's enough mass production going on, that a lot of it is on the smaller side, but again, I understand this side of wanting to do this. Couple of things that were mentioned that I think are slightly inaccurate in some of the specifications and some of the odors. When you look at cannabis and how far it can travel, depending on what type of cannabis it is, as he mentioned, with many different types, five plants can travel two hundred feet to three quarters of a mile, depending on how the wind is blowing. That's five plants, obviously in a ten thousand square area, it might be a lot more than that. You have two sports complexes right down the street, one indoor, one outdoor, the outdoor one is always... And their prime time to play is when this is going to be flowering in that time period in the fall. Something to think about if your grandkids... Something to think about if your grandkids, kids are on that field is the one that they're gonna be smelling when they're out there playing on soccer. Something to think about. As for the water, cannabis is extremely consumerable. Uh, it's not a lot less than tomatoes. It's actually five times worse than a tomato plant. One cannabis plant requires five-point-eight gallons a day of water. Just to give you that and a little bit of context, tomato plants are a quarter to one gallon a day. Peppers are a quarter to a half a gallon a week. But huge difference in, in water quantities. In a garden, there's never gonna be able to water ten-thousand square foot of cannabis. It's impossible. That being said, what happens when all that water, when they do get the water production up, where does it run off though? That's the studies that are being done in these other states now of what's happening with the runoff and how that is affecting neighboring houses. Because there's a lot of where you're gonna flow through the, all those in the water ground. Something to think about on that side. The security was mentioned, that he does it here and all that. Obviously, that's some people on that side. Something that wasn't talked about was, and this is again, is studies that are going on now. They found out that growing one ounce of cannabis indoors, now this is indoors, produces the same amount of greenhouse gases as burning seven to sixteen gallons of gasoline. The outdoor study is actually coming out the end of next month. They think it's gonna be less than that because then you have other airborne ground, but still, we're producing a lot of greenhouse gases, which is one of the worst breathing in African environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Straverman, 802 Marshall Mall, Franklin. The whole idea of tonight is here called the zoning law. We have zoning laws for reasons. We're all law-abiding citizens. And State of New Jersey says marijuana can only be grown in an industrial zone. There was discussion about farmland, farmland preservation. In my wildest dreams, I would never accuse a point-two-three acre person as a farmer. State of New Jersey states a farm has to be six acres to be accused or qualified. Now, Mr. Piper's farm is indeed eighteen acres, fifty-eight oh one, block thirty-five. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, Mr. Piper came to this township Agriculture Advisory Committee to preserve his farm. State of New Jersey denied him the law. I know why. Something happened. Mr. Shining and everyone here says this farm is known as Fine Land's Rural Residential. According to the State of New Jersey, they say it's known as Fine Land's Agriculture Production. We had a resident in the neighborhood of Mr. Piper who lived to his left, who applied to Fine Land's and changed it from PRR to PAP in five twenty-nine oh two. Our zoning maps indicate that it is PRR. State of New Jersey says it's PAP. Minimum lot size in powdering Fine Land's agricultural production is forty-point-zero acres. Because of this, Mr. Piper had to go to the Fine Land's Commission and request a certificate of filing, as well as an LOI, Letter of Interpretation, to find out his Fine Land's credits. We never heard from him again. If a, if a farm is some forty acres, PDC's Fine Land's Development Credits were applied. Two other members in the township pushed an ordinance, oh twenty-one oh one, to rezone Mr. Piper's farm from PRR to PAP. Now, I don't have that document in front of me, but I'm gonna tell everyone here, oh twenty-one oh one, it was changed to PRR, Rural Residential, Minimum Lot Size, Forty Acres, and that's why Mr. Piper's farm is not preserved.
Thanks for your trouble. Okay, please, raise your right hand, both of you. You swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
Yes.
State your name and address.
Oh, I'm thirty-five, thirty-five, I'm a solid, I'm a good, I'm a good. Well, it's two-three, it's a solid, I'm a good. I would just like to say I'm very proud of my daughter and uncle, what they're quite hard on doing, and I really appreciate it because I want to have it. So, I want to just grow up in your country and like, just be a countryman, I guess.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth about the testimony you're gonna give?
I do. Good evening. Jason Brand, good to see you here. Mr. Chairman, I'm here this evening to speak on, not specific to this application, these applications in general. Um, several of these have come before the Board previously, as you know, and have been high-buck at the Board, right before, so, um, I wanted to just clarify a couple inaccuracies I heard from the record this evening. Uh, first thing, that commercial cannabis cultivation is recognized as agricultural use. That's factually incorrect. The State of New Jersey does not recognize commercial cannabis cultivation as agricultural use. Second, that the township somehow intended to permit this use. That also is not correct. The township had an opportunity to ban certain classes of cannabis cultivation. Uh, they did so with classes one to four. Uh, they chose to permit classes five and six, which are cultivation and manufacturing, uh, in the industrial zones within the township. That's the second point of clarification. The third is, there was a statement that cannabis, commercial cannabis cultivation is recognized, uh, under the Mississippi law as an inherently beneficial use. That is also accurately, or factually incorrect. Um, I'm sure Mr. Shining can list the, the uses which are recognized under the Mississippi law as inherently beneficial, um, some of them being hospitals, churches, things of the like. Uh, but I do not believe unless there's a change and people confirm, uh, that, that commercial cannabis cultivation, uh, did one of those uses. So, I'd just like to point out this. Those three things. I'd also caution the Board, um, to be careful taking into consideration, uh, testimony by any individual, uh, who would be considered here, so, uh, there was a testimony this evening with certain township officials, uh, giving endorsements for this project. Um, without those, those officials here or across the land, uh, I think that's mildly inappropriate. I'll take that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else like to be heard? Let's not close the public portion. I make a motion to close the public portion. Motion by Dana DeCesary. I second it. Second right here. Mr. Glazier, it's all in favor?
I oppose.
Okay, Ms. Masal, you want to have any closing remarks?
I do. Um, I just want to clarify a few things. Um, my argument wasn't that New Jersey already recognizes cannabis as an inherently beneficial use. My argument is that it is an inherently beneficial use, even though it's not one of the ones that New Jersey officially has listed as automatically inherently beneficial. Um, and the reasons obviously, or what we discussed earlier, that it is, uh, used for medicinal purposes. It's used for therapeutic purposes. I mean, people have been using cannabis to treat not just military veterans treating psychiatric stress disorder, but many conditions, seizures, seizures, cancer. Everyone here knows somebody who used marijuana before it was officially legal, but the state has since made it legal. And my argument related to, uh, the ordinance that Franklin Township passed, and I think Mr. Brand has the numbers backwards. They had the ability at that point to restrict any of the six classes of cannabis at, at any area in the township, was I believe how the ordinance specifically reads, the fact I can, uh, pull it up with that material. Now, it does also reference that if they don't, then it is automatically a permitted use within industrial zones. So, my point is, at that point, they could have specifically restricted and said, we do not, you cannot allow any cannabis operation, any of the six classes, anywhere in the township. They could easily have done it, and other townships have done it, but they chose not to do that. They chose to not restrict the first four classes of cannabis, and class number one, the first one being the cultivation. They chose to restrict class five and six in every area of the township. So, they don't want distribution or retail sale anywhere in the township. They did not choose to likewise restrict the other ones. So, basically, what it's saying is they had the opportunity to make it a, uh, I forget the exact word, prohibitive use. They had the opportunity to make it an actual prohibitive use, and they chose not to do it. It only may, according, you know, to the arguments in the township, it may only automatically make it a permitted use in industrial zones, but it indicates where the township was, as far as what they were willing to permit in the township and what they were not willing to permit in the township. So, that's just to clarify. Nobody's attempting to mislead anyone. We're just simply making an argument that if, if it wasn't inherently beneficial, the State of New Jersey would have no reason to legalize it. Franklin Township would have no reason to say this isn't a prohibitive use, uh, and it, it has a medicinal purpose. I mean, it was legal for, uh, medicinal purposes before it became legal for recreational purposes. So, when we say a hospital is inherently beneficial, it's because it treats ill people, and basically, a prescription medication is also treating someone's illness. Uh, beyond that, though, we talked about the benefits of, uh, maintaining rural character frankly, because nobody's professing that ten-thousand square feet makes this a, a farm. What we're saying is that the same benefits that come from farming any other plant that isn't marijuana also come from farming marijuana and the, uh, cannabis, my bad. And the fact that this increased, uh, cash flow from this one small part of the farm allows the remainder of the farm to thrive and actually remain a farm is, is the whole point. Uh, if this property isn't eligible for farmland preservation, if, you know, and, and again, that's a whole different attitude that, um, Mr. Piper will have to pursue, because it sounded like something was really messed up at some point in the early two thousands related to zoning, if the state thinks it's one zone and the township thinks it's another. But I would argue that the township has the zoning map. So, what the township says it is, is what it is. The state may have something else for the purposes of farmland preservation, but, you know, Franklin Township owns the zoning map. Anyway, just to get back to, the argument is it's inherently beneficial, but even if the Board weren't to find it inherently beneficial, this particular property is uniquely situated for this, uh, opportunity, basically. Now, you have, uh, you know, three people, three neighbors who've come out of those to it. Um, you have Jason and Ralph who came out to point out technicalities that they disagree with. You know, I sat here where there, the room has been full of angry people because, you know, there's a proposed, uh, cannabis, uh, manufacturing facility within, within a hundred feet or a couple hundred feet of a school, you know, or something like that. This is not that. You have a few neighbors who are afraid that it might smell. It's the long and short of it. Now, we've provided you with testimony as far as how they're gonna mitigate the smell. They clearly are concerned with keeping the neighbors happy. I mean, he took the time to go around and talk to every neighbor to try to address their concerns. Uh, he is working with, as he testified, a professor from Stockton, I believe, uh, for the sole purpose of getting a handle, speak wide, on scents of marijuana and how, you know, how they affect things. The point is, uh, this property is uniquely situated because it's not near a school. It's not near neighbors. It's a big, open property where the wind will blow any proposed scent back towards the woods. Um, is it possible that there may be a faint scent of something here and there? Maybe. It's not, you know, to say that that's impossible, but there are additional steps that can be taken if it becomes a problem. I mean, in theory, uh, you know, Bill could go smoke cannabis at the corner of this property, and the scent of marijuana could whack over to those school bus parked there. I mean, it's, it's just very hypothetical and not based on an actual harm. It's based on, I would like not to maybe snuck something for a couple weeks at one point in the year, but probably not. I mean, and I get it. They, they have a right to feel that way. I'm not saying that they don't. I'm just saying that, uh, the benefits of this far outweigh any negative, but there is no negative to actually the goals of the township, the master plan, the zoning ordinance. You know, neighbors are allowed to say that I'd rather not live next to that, but that doesn't make it harmful, you know, to the township's purposes in zoning and things of that nature. So, for all these reasons, I would ask that you grant the conditional use variance, the variance, uh, for the mixed use along with it. Uh, if, if we are able to get a waiver of the site plan, we would also ask for a variance of the eight-foot scent, adult fens. And if not, you know, we would ask that, uh, if we, you know, come back for this opening, we'll ask what it's at.
Thank you, Ms. Masal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I don't think anybody's disputing whether cannabis is beneficial to people. It certainly is health-wise additionally. And it is a legal, it is legal. That's the other thing I think you need to remember. What is it particularly suited for this piece of property? That's the question we need to answer. So, gentlemen, you heard the testimony. You got anything? Both sides? Anything? Any comments from professionals?
No. No, I'm, I'm in agreement with a couple of things Mr. Brand said, that any kind hearsay testimony, such as that the chief approved of it, I think you can't really accept that as a given unless you had a letter or had him here in private.
About the security, you're saying?
Yeah.
I believe the fences have to be eight-foot and has to be tall. It has to be what the state says it has to be. Has to be an eight-foot fence, so. Can't get away from that. All right. Need a motion. You heard the, both sides. Oh, boy. This isn't easy. Hard choices. It's gotta be done. I'm gonna make a motion approving this. I don't know if I'm doing her anything or not. I'm not sure. The farm is big enough to support this. You have to do this in a way that it doesn't affect the neighbors. How about, so? We need, yeah, and we still need a site plan. We need to know what's going where, how the security is gonna be set up. We can't let it go without, without a site plan. Have I covered it, Mr. Mike?
Um, main thing is a site plan, if, if the Board works to approve it, um, make sure that the site plan, there's a lot of issues that would have to be addressed.
All right, so it's a, a motion to approve? With, with the site plan? We're not, not?
With the site plan.
Not the waiver of the site plan? Is that right? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mike Garfold. Motion by Richard Glazier.
Mr.?
Go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Gattano?
We vote, um, we're voting on?
Approving.
On the, on that.
Approve or disapprove?
But the approval is, yes, on fence. It's the idea of it, but without a site plan.
With a site plan.
With a site.
It's gonna be good.
Now, we're gonna see the site plan again prior to?
Yes.
Uh-huh. So, I'm, I'm a yes on that.
Mr. Ketchum?
No.
Mr. Garfalo?
Yes.
Mr. DeCesary?
No.
Mr. Glazier?
Yes.
Chairman Greedman?
Yes.
So, it's, uh, it's, it's an honor tonight.
So it's denied tonight, requires five affirmative votes.
Five affirmative votes.
Four affirmative votes.
So the public understands you have to have five yes votes for your experience, even though it was four to three.
Five to two.
I'm sorry, four to two. Okay. All right.
No more. Still more applications tonight, resolutions, Mike?
You just have the one for Paul Burgess, thirty by sixty, D. Hatch, private garage.
All right, motion to approve the resolution for Paul Burgess?
I make that motion.
Motion by Dana DeCesare, seconded by...
Second.
Mike Garfold, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Any secretaries report, Chrissy?
No, there is none.
Nobody will ever get a secretary's warrant.
So that's only something, I don't know, cause I actually, after one of those meetings, asked Barb about that, and they have, just they haven't done anything that needs to come down to us, but that's where it comes from.
All right. Correspondents, Mike, anyway?
I don't know.
Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Dana, seconded by Richard Glazier, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Be adjourned.